May 10th, 2017. So I want to open the meeting, call it to order in our first order of business.
The conditions to survive in the United States of America and in the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, while we're standing, I would like to make mention of four residents who passed away during this last week. Whitney Woggett Whitman was a graduate of Old Knighten High School.
..............................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
Okay, so I think all of this would be done, the restoration or the replication would be done prior to construction of the building of the dwellings. You have here what, a three-bedroom dwelling? Yes, front page. Okay, so the driveway, the mucking, and then the replication will be done prior to any of the other work?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. No, because that way this gets done.
Yeah, we'll do the replication first.
Yes, sir.
We have that problem with somewhere else.
That's fine.
Somewhere else.
There are no issues.
Okay. What is this on the, right here? Oh, this is the septic system.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, okay. I'm just looking at it and I didn't pick it up right away, okay. Reserve it, okay. Okay. No, he's okay. You all set? Marty?
No, we did get out to the site and we did take a look.
When did you get out?
It was April, mid-April. And we documented, we stopped pounding at 25 egg masses in the lower pool that they have marked as certifiable vernal pool. So it's quite a productive pool. We looked at the up gradient, ponded area within the stream. We looked at it, it did have some water, but it was very mucky and didn't have any evidence of any breeding. So, you know, I think that what happens is there's enough gradient there that it does drain into the vernal pool. So that area, I wouldn't consider a vernal pool. So I think they're all set with that. As far as the plan revisions, you know, there were a lot of my recommendations, they took care of. There's a couple more, just for your special conditions that I would recommend to you, but other than that, they seem to satisfy everything, all their comments. The driveway, they'll have to muck the driveway out and build the replication area because they're going to use the wetland soil, which is a, they should do that, it's a good idea. So that, so they'll have to, you know, instead of filling, they'll have to just, you know, remove the material out of there. That might be a messy project, but, you know, crossing it will be messy. Hopefully it'll be done in summer, so it's not as wet as it is now.
Well, if it was last year, it would be bone dry.
Yeah, so, right, right.
I mean, as I said, the vernal pools behind my house didn't fill up until mid-April of this year. It was just horrendously dry until we got that five-inch rainstorm, and then we got a two-inch rainstorm, and then we've got a couple more after that.
Yeah.
So it's been, it's...
So, and then I saw, I can go through some of my other recommended, recommended special conditions if you want.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. You know, so, because I think the order should specify that construction access is from County Street only and not coming, not that it can now, but there are notice, a house being built up in the lot on, up behind it, so, but I think that should be specified. And then prior to work, the building corners and the septic system and the drinking water well and limited grading should be staked out, so it can be confirmed that everything fits on that lot as shown on the plan. The setback from the vernal pool is confirmed.
Okay, so this one here, Charlie? Charlie?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And then, since that is a certifiable, certifiable vernal pool and it's productive, we recommend that the commission add a special condition that it gets certified. We can provide the information that we collected, so it's an easy, easy thing that they can do online. So we recommend that that is a special condition, so that it gets mapped by Heritage. It's mapped now as a potential vernal pool, so it is on the map. It would just change its designation to a certified vernal pool.
And you can take care of that?
I could, or I could provide the information, however you want to handle that. Yeah. And they provided the location of the utility poles, and then, and then the drinking water well shouldn't move any closer to the vernal pool than is shown on the plan. Because it will be drawing water off the, you know, out of the act, I don't know if it's going to be a deep well or shallow well.
Oh, a deep well.
Deep well. So if it's a deep well, we'd have no way to back down. So... And the revised plan that we had was stamped by a PLS, and this plan we have is just stamped by a PE. Maybe they can provide this movement. Is it? Yeah. Just missing a stamp on the, on the plan set you have tonight.
That revision date?
This is January 5th, yours is, that you got tonight was May 8th. This is the plan they submitted in the last meeting, which was stamped by a PLS, so they should be able to get a stamp. So you have a stamp, you have a stamp set of plans in your file, full stamp, PLS and PE.
Okay. That's, okay.
I think that was it.
Did insight get a copy of your... Conditions that she recommended will be in there. Very good.
What I can do is I can revise the list for you and send it to you in Word, so you can put it in. Because a lot of the recommended conditions, they took care of in this set of plans that you have.
Okay.
So the list will be quite a bit shorter.
Okay, yeah, you got, like, County Street only and to certify the vernal pool, without, those were two anyway that were there.
Mm-hmm. Staking out, staking out the lot, the work on the lot.
Okay. Okay.
I would recommend the conditions stay in about the replication area be constructed and planted prior to...
That was in here somewhere, you already had that in here. I don't know if it was on that recommendation, but I did see it.
Yeah. So this four.
Oh, yeah, there it is, yeah.
Five, inspection of the well and, oh no, that's the two.
You want to see it, Charlie? Read the notes?
I read them before.
Okay, all right, I checked off here.
I looked through them when I downloaded it.
Okay.
And they did say provides certification that the vernal pool depression boundary flags were located by field survey.
Hmm?
So they have, so the plan is stamped and that should...
Okay. I don't have any, I don't have any questions. I move that we close the hearing and issue an order of conditions.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you board members. Thank you, Marty.
Okay.
Thank you.
Marty, that, the one that I was telling you about, if that comes up, Charlie will be notified of your next month.
Okay.
On that site again.
Well, it won't be retired by then, so I'll be...
You need that. You need that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Marty.
Let me know if you need to put the order for the draft in. I'll just do it anyway, so, okay.
Thank you.
Stay a little longer.
Okay, all right, bye.
I liked hearing what I did today, Marty, anyway. Okay.
New hearing. Knighton Homes, L.L.C.
Yes. Gentlemen, my name is Bob Rogers with GAF.
John what?
Bob Rogers.
Bob Rogers.
Yes, sir. Steitenwood Circle. I represent GAF Engineering in Steitenwood Circle. Pitching impacts.
Okay, and...
Proof of legal ad, it was paid.
All right, thank you.
Sure. You should have a couple of copies of the plan, I brought a couple extra.
Okay, I have seen...
This is... Two extras I brought.
Okay.
So this is just a buffer zone project, it's Lot 29.
Okay, wait a minute, you're going to orient, orient me on this, Knighton Wood Circle is?
This is a copy of the assesses map.
Okay, that's good, okay.
Up with Lot 29.
Okay, that's...
This is, so these three lots have already been approved for construction, this is Lot 29. This is the one over here, 49.
Okay. Wait a minute, let's see. Oh, my point, okay. I'll take, you said 29.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And so there's no wetland on the property, there's just buffer zone on the property. Lot has water sewer service, there's very little grading proposed on the lot.
When you said it had sewers, is that, is that...
In the road.
They have a... Their old system. Yep, yeah, okay. Their old system, okay. Uh, let's see. What is the size of this lot?
It's a, it's small lots, it's a small cluster.
Request?
Seventy-eight hundred, seventy-eight hundred square feet.
Oh, okay, seventy-eight hundred.
Correct. So, yeah, the proposed dwelling is consistent with the other dwellings in the neighborhood. I guess there's maybe three dozen lots. Here, there's any access, well, 50 lots. So I think this subdivision goes back to the year 2000.
Okay.
So... So we have no more than one to two feet of fill on a small home with a porch, it's got utility connections to the front of the street, just a small section of buffer zone in the back. We're looking for a negative determination, just, the only requirement we're proposing is a silt fence in the back at the toe slope of the proposed grading.
Okay, so the, the proposed porch will be in the buffer zone, and you have the 25-foot no-touch zone listed?
Well, the 25-foot no-touch would not show up on this plan, so, you know, it wouldn't touch the property. You know, we're basically, there's 40 feet, we're 40 feet into the 100-foot buffer, so...
Okay.
So this, this is the home we propose, these are already been approved by the commission.
Okay.
And this is us, and that's the 100-foot buffer, so we're not anywhere near the no-touch. But there's about a 40-foot section. Inevitable impact.
Yeah, okay, no, I just wanted to, I didn't recall this here, and that's why I wanted to get myself oriented again to this. Okay, I don't have any questions, so can I make a motion?
Can I make a motion that we close the hearing and issue a negative determination for Lot 49?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it.
Do you win or lose? Just pictures. Jennifer Lane. So I heard that before.
You're familiar with the Senator Ryan?
Yeah, I'm familiar. Yeah, I sent somebody down there looking at lots. Who do they call if they're interested in a lot? He was interested, he liked these two of them.
Call John?
That's the number that's on the board that's out there?
I believe so.
Okay.
Well, Hawthorne Development.
I got nothing to do with it.
You can look up Hawthorne Development at times. So just to quickly go over this, good evening, Jeff Holmes from Site Tech Engineering, representing Hawthorne Development on the notice of intent for Lot 1. As you can see on the plan, we're just proposing to construct a single-family dwelling within the 100-foot buffer zone. Basically, the whole lot is within the 100-foot buffer zone. The silt fence that we're proposing to establish the limit of work is in place, that was the approved turtle barrier in limit of work that was agreed upon when we did the definitive subdivision in the filing with Division of Fisheries and Wildlife. So that, again, that silt fence, silt fence is in place, we are maintaining a 25-foot no-disturb buffer at, off of the wetlands at the rear of the property. We're proposing to do a walkout with minimal grading in the backyard, so the actual amount of work in the 50-foot buffer zone, the inner 50-foot buffer zone is just some grading work. The house would be set back at 50 feet as required by your regulations. And that's it, I mean, it's basically pretty straightforward.
This is the north side of Jennifer Lane?
This would be the S, this is the first lot on the north side as you go in.
No, no, I kept it in my head.
And this, I believe this is the last lot that we, that would be within your jurisdiction. I think we filed for all the rest of them at this point, but, yeah, so this is it, this is the, you know, as you're coming in from the bank off of 138, it's the first lot on the right side.
On the westly side of the dwelling?
Yes.
How is that, you've got contours, is that a lot of filled property on that side? And is that what, uh, the way I had a contour?
Yeah.
Okay, you proposed retaining wall?
Yeah, we have a retaining wall going off the back side of the dwelling there.
Okay, that's going to be a walkout, walkout basement?
It's a walkout basement. You know, there's a pretty good pitch on, as you can see, if you look at the existing contours on the plan, there's a pretty good pitch from that front left corner going, you know, basically to the, you know, towards the middle of the lot, towards the wetland.
Yep.
So, yeah, I mean, ideally, walkout works great on this lot, you know, we're raising the grade at the front a little bit, and then the back of the house will be at existing grade. So, you know, typical seven-and-a-half-foot-high foundational wall, so you'd have about six feet of grade change between the front and the back of the house.
Okay, yeah, so 49, you've got this, okay.
Maybe a little bit, maybe seven, if you wish, so.
Okay, and, okay, is this the conservation land behind this here?
That's correct. Yeah, that possible way is the conservation.
Okay. I don't have any questions on it. I'm virtually with the lot. I've been there so many times.
Make a motion that we close the hearing and issue an order of conditions for the...
Lot 1?
Yep.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I have one other thing, if you guys have a minute, that I just want to go over with you.
We're going to time you.
Okay. I have a client of mine that bought one of the lots in there, so basically, we had come in and got a negative determination for Lot 12, which is on the other side of the street, on the south side, about halfway down, maybe a little bit more than halfway down going down because of total size. So this is the plan that the commission had approved. So basically, they were, the house that they're looking to build on there is similar, it's going to be located in a similar spot. As you can see, we were 47 feet off, 66 feet back, this one's 65 feet back, 45 feet off of the sideline. You know, we had 55 on this, we're 56 here. So the house is basically right where we added it on this plan. The grading has changed a little bit in the front yard, in the backyard where the buffer zone is, we were showing a little bit of, actually, we were showing a little bit more grading, but further away from the wetland on this one. You know, on this plan, we're showing a little bit more grading. What he'd like to do is just expand the backyard. He may not even do this grading, but I just put it in there to kind of even everything out in the back. But basically, he's looking to expand the backyard up to the 25-foot no-disturb, but that would just involve clearing for yard or lawn purposes. No construction proposed back here. Again, we do have the silt fence that's already located and in place.
This is on the south side of the...
This is on the south side, yes. So the back of the slot would be going down towards Country Hill Drive in this location. The resource area that we have, we do have a, and the resource, resource area is located, comes into his property, but it is a, you have a bordering vegetated wetland and also a town-protected vernal pool, which the outer 100-foot zone or extent of that pool would be here. So what we're talking about is the 25-foot off of that is kind of where he's looking up to get up against. If you look at it, you look at the lot itself, he's got an existing...
If you look at it, you look at the lot itself, he's got an existing, the existing stone wall, which was the original division line, comes right through here, and it's kind of weird the way this, this side is graded, because anything on the other side of the stone wall drains down towards this wetland here. You can see this kind of like a ridge that comes through here, you look at the existing contours, and everything on this side drains towards the road. So all the work that he's proposing is not within the watershed of the wetland itself. It's actually going, this whole lot back here drains out towards the street, towards Jennifer Lane. And this is like the high point, this is elevation.
So you're, so you're, what you're asking is if, if we would be akin to...
Yeah.
...getting a little bit more than that. I wouldn't have a problem just keeping a little bit more on this side of the, of the dividing line, and that way it would be on the safe side.
Yeah, you know, his whole point...
Because you've already got, you already got approval to do...
Yeah, we're not changing the limit of work or anything that we had here. That's the existing silt fence, we're not changing that.
So you're adding another 10 feet of yard in there.
We're just showing a little bit more clear going in the back. See, what he's, what he's looking to do is, and you have this nice existing stone wall there, he's looking to kind of open it up so he can see that from his yard, you know, so it wouldn't be back in the woods. And, I mean, that's the permanent barrier that's going to be in place, that's not going to change. And he's got the silt fence that goes along with it, goes along it right now, he's not proposing to change that. He just wants to expand the yard area that we have shown there. So I told him I was coming in tonight, and I told him I'd bring a copy of the plan in, and just...
It's all, it's all buffer zone?
It's all buffers, yeah. It's all buffer zone working, so like I said...
The 25-foot clearance, and, you know, you've got, you're talking about that, about the natural berm that's there.
Yes.
Just let them keep a little bit on this side.
Yes, yeah, and that's why we're showing, we're going to maintain a 25-foot area launch, no touch, we're certainly going to maintain that. But he would like to clear and just plant some grass and clean it up a little bit up to that point, to make it as lawn area and to open up his yard to that stone wall, so he can see the stone.
You don't want to change the flow.
Oh, no, no.
It's got to stay the same.
It's got to stay, yeah, this whole, well, I shouldn't say the whole lot, but basically, the whole usable portion of this lot drains to Jennifer Lane, you know, away from the wetland. Basically, from the stone wall, everything, you know, it's kind of, the stone wall's built along a ridge here, so everything on this side of the stone wall drains to Jennifer Lane, where the other side of the stone wall drains to these wetland pockets.
There's no loss or no gain really?
No.
More open?
Yeah.
I don't have, I don't have a problem with it.
Okay.
It's all right, don't you stay on this side of it, then you don't change the flow.
All right, so what, yeah, what I'll do is I'll leave this plan with you, so you can have it in your file, just that way...
Do you want a confirmation or letter or something from the commission?
Yeah, if you don't mind, I mean, that would be great. But basically, I would imagine you would have to sign off on a building permit when he gets to that point, so I just wanted to make you guys...
The building permit is going to be basically saying, there's no wetland involved.
Yeah, well, that's going to be the new building permit, lot plan, so I just didn't want to have him come in for the building permit with a different plan, showing a little bit more work than what we had on what you had already approved, so...
Get a lot number or something on it?
That was lot 12.
12?
Yes. And it assesses map nine, lot 21-12, is the assessing reference.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Tom, were you here for any of this, though?